With you all, I've met a couple of you so far in person and I look forward to getting together with the rest of you as we get into the woods on all the wonderful issues you're dealing with here. And I'll speak in more length when we get to the issues update later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Without a couple of shop, housekeeping things, if you have cell phones, please put them in a silent mode so they don't interrupt the meeting. If there are any decisions that are reached by the planning commission tonight, maybe appealed to the city council within 15 days. And we have a reasonably short agenda, so I don't believe that we will drift past 10:30. With that, we are at the point for comments from the public. Please, this is for items not appearing on the agenda tonight. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Paul McGavin. I'm actually from Petaluma. And I'm here to say thank you to the city planning department and to the city manager to listen to the comments we made roughly a month ago. With Verizon basically having a trump card over the city, it looks like you've now reached an agreement that we are holding into right now. It's a signed agreement by the city attorney and Paul Arberton, who's the lawyer for Verizon. And they're doing some good things, all right? They're saying that you can have a full public process and they won't be enforcing their shot clock rights even though the time has run. That's an excellent position to take because it gives you now the chance to have the full public process in order to realize what's the basis for this. Should we go forward? Should we not go forward? What are the good reasons? What are the not? So you can decide based on what's in the public record and they don't have that trump card. So that's great. We want to thank very much for that. What I do want to do is to share with you some things that we are going to put into the public record about the three towers that are going to be heard on the 30th, a special meeting on August 30th. Everyone should know to come because that's a very, very important meeting to come and we will have a number of citizens here. But I have here a very low-tech way to measure distance. And what I did was I went to the three poles and I spotted where the residents were, the homes. And even though these are nominally in commercial areas, these three locations are very close to residences. And so you'll see the video, you'll get it all in the public record, and we have screen grabs, so it'll be in the written public record. But I put this down by the pole and walked straight across with my camera on it, and we got the numbers. So how close are these poles to homes? Well, the one that we're going to hear about later, which has taken about $150,000 off of someone's home value, is 28 feet from his house and about 130 feet from the neighbor across the street. The ones in the commercial zones, you think those are commercial zones, not close to homes? Not true. The one on Sonoma Avenue, excuse me, on Fifth Street West is within 150 feet of the closest home and 175 feet to another home. The one on Second Street is within 105 feet of two homes. And then the one on First Street is the one that's about 200 feet from a home. All of those are much closer than the setback that the city of Petaluma decided was appropriate for homes that would be located in commercial or mixed-use zones. They picked a setback of 500 feet. And that was a setback for people who chose to live in mixed-use or commercial zones, taking more of a risk that they would be closer to industrial equipment. Petaluma also took a stance that said, anyone living in a residential zone? Not at all. Because it's not appropriate to put industrial equipment in a residential zone. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Lynn Marie DeVincent. I live at 65 Guadalajara. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk at public comment. I've been doing community outreach for the Sonoma citizens who are concerned about this Verizon so-called small cell tower applications. Unfortunately, the item was removed from tonight's agenda. Personally, I would like it to be postponed indefinitely until the city council can hold a special study session. I've been speaking out about it since April and it's time to stop the delays and give the citizens of Sonoma the opportunity to be informed about the reasons to oppose the installation of these 10 cell towers in residential neighborhoods. And the three main reasons are health hazards, compromised neighborhood safety, and damage to property values. I want to just touch briefly on something that's kind of shocking about the health hazards. I have an article that I'd like to share with you all. So, did you know that the California firefighters have an official exemption from these 4G, 5G cell towers on their stations? I brought that article for you. You can read. So why were they given an exemption? Well, they did testing and proved that there are serious adverse health effects from microwave radiation. And our California legislators agreed and gave them an exemption. And we think that's wonderful. But we value our firefighters more and more every day. But you have to think about what are the firefighters defending? They're defending us. And so why wouldn't all of us be exempt from these cancer-causing cell towers? So please study this article. It's short. It's written by a CBS investigative journalist. And if you can, suggest that you contact the city and let them know that there's something very wrong with this project and we need a special council study session. So no matter what anyone tells you, this is not a done deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark Martholler, 146 East Spain. So I'm here for the 5G cell tower against it. And to add on to Lynn Marie DeVincent's comment about the firefighters, they were able to get an exemption because, it wasn't because of commercial residential, it was because of health. So they're concerned about their health and they have data to prove that it damages their health. It threatens their health. So what about the police? What about schools? What about, I don't know, wineries, daycare centers, hospitals, your house, your house, your house, your house, your house, anybody's house? So it gets emotional at that point. And reaffirmed by a visit with the gentleman who lives on Fifth Street West in Mariano with the cellphone tower that was going to go 28 feet from his house. The main point is health, you know? Aside from the fact that the FCC has made a ruling that they can't legislate, you guys can't make decisions based on health concerns, it is the only concern when it comes down to it. I made these blowups of a cell tower. And this is precisely the configuration with some small edits. It's about seven to eight feet tall. It's both sides, so hopefully they can see it in the back. This thing is, this is the result here of this without it even going in yet, okay? So this is a photograph of the guy's for-sale sign. It's still on the market and nobody wants it. I could tell you the number he quoted to me. His house was for sale for, he's owned it 15 years. It went up over about 60, 70% in value. It's got a reduced sign. So anybody driving by that sees reduced and automatically thinks perhaps there's something wrong with the house, automatically without knowing that this exists. And it hasn't even come in yet. This guy's in a world of hurt. And we're dealing with a predatory entity, Verizon. I mean, this guy is already losing, okay? And I doubt Verizon's going to come back and say, hey, we're sorry, we're pulling out, we're not going to do it. How about we give you, you know, some funds to take care of your pain? I mean, they don't care about us. And I just think that that kind of entity should not be allowed in Sonoma. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else care to speak in public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of the agenda. Our next item is review and acceptance of the agenda and our planning director.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and the public, I'd like to reiterate what you received in email late this afternoon that we request you pull and continue items 7.2 and 7.3. 7.2 is the tentative map to subdivide .67 acre site into four lots at 249 First Street West. We're requesting you continue that because we received word late after the packet went out Friday from Caltrans that they may still have comments on the environmental document with regards to cultural issues and they would not be--
Excuse me, that's for 7.3, yes, not?
I beg your pardon. No. Excuse me, I beg your pardon. Yes, it is. Thank you. 7.3, thank you, Mr. Chair. We received comment, they want to be, reserve the right to make comments up until August 23rd. And since they are a lead agency, we've got to put this one on hold that's not ready for you yet. Thank you for correcting me on that. 7.2, the subdivision of the four lots. And by the way, 7.3 was the use permit and parking exception to develop the .68 acre site with 12 residential apartments and two live-work units located at 19410 Sonoma Highway. That was 7.3. And that's the one with regards to Caltrans and the SEQA document. 7.2, we're also requesting you continue to date uncertain. And that is because the negative, we received comment from one of you commissioners this morning that felt that the project did not qualify for an exemption under SEQA. And we looked into it and we conferred with the town attorney. And in fact, it was not fully vetted in order to give it the categorical exemption. So we have to go back and complete the vetting to be able to classify it as exempt under what was referenced in the report, which I think was 13, 513 or 315. So we have more work to do on the SEQA analysis on that one also. So unfortunately, both of those have to be continued tonight so that we can take care properly of the environmental analysis. And lastly, there was a snafu we caught also with regards to the exemptions on how the city notices these projects as well as on the agenda. In the future, you will be seeing the categorical exemptions on the noticing and the agenda, which is the proper way to do it. So it wasn't even properly noticed. And I apologize for that. My excuse is I started on Tuesday and this packet went out without any review. Fortunately, we caught those glitches and here we are. So as you mentioned, it's going to be a relatively light agenda tonight. You have two on consent and one public hearing, 7.1.
And it's my understanding that we will need to look for a motion on both of those items that we want to pull when we get to those--
That would be helpful, yes.
With that, do you have late correspondence?
Yes, Chair Felder, we have one piece of correspondence regarding item 7.1 from Gerald Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then moving along, we are now to the consent calendar. And all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the commission, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed for separate action. And I also would like our planning director to speak on this one.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as you know, we met on Tuesday, which we will be doing regularly as a habit to go over the agenda. And during our discussion, it came up to double-check the dates that the requests for the extensions were made. So staff went back and we looked at both 6.1 and 6.2. And we confirmed that 6.1 was submitted to staff 10 days before the permit had lapsed. So that's fine. 6.2 actually did come in before the end, the lapsed, the permit lapsed, but not within the 10-day prior to the lapsing date. And that was actually a mistake of staff. The applicant had emailed and asked when the letter had to be submitted by. And unfortunately, staff gave the date that it was submitted on, not the proper date of 10 days before the lapsing. So in this case, we would ask you to give the applicant the benefit of doubts and staff misled them and continue to keep this on consent. And I'm adding these, this information just as clarification. And if you want to discuss what I just said about the second item, you will have to pull it. Thank you.
Okay. So that having been said, does anybody from the commission want to pull either of these Or staff? Or anybody from the public? Seeing none, we will, I will then entertain a motion to accept, to act on these two items?
I move that we approve items 6.1 and 6.2 as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to abstain simply because I didn't see the original applications. And so I don't really know anything about either one of these projects.
Okay. We then move into the public hearing, item 7.1.
Chair Felder, I have to recuse myself due to proximity.
Okay.
Excuse me, but is alternate Carrato not also within proximity?
No.
Oh, you have moved?
No, but I'm a rental month-to-month. And so therefore it does not conflate. I've checked.
Okay, with that, we will move on to item 7.1, which is the application of David Boger to operate an automotive restoration facility within an existing tenant space on the property at 254 First Street East in conjunction with a parking exception. With that, I'd look for a staff report from Wendy.
Thank you, Chair Felder and members of the commission. Since you've all had an opportunity to review the staff report, this evening, I'm going to limit my presentation to a summary of the highlights. So the project before you is for an automobile restoration facility. The use would be limited to mechanical restoration work and no power equipment. Proposed hours are Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Because the lease for the building does not include any parking spaces, a parking exception would be required. In conversations with Chair Felder earlier this week, suggested condition of approval in the form of the following is suggested to be added to the conditions. Employees shall be prohibited from parking personal vehicles on site. And if the planning commission agrees with the wording for this condition, please include it in any motions made. The proposal is consistent with both the general plan and the development code with the exception of the parking exception. With regard to discussion of project issues, with regard to noise, it's staff's opinion that the noise impacts have been addressed because no power equipment is going to be used. And with regard to the parking exception, normally five spaces would be required for this type of use in the size of a building. And since the lease doesn't allow the tenant to have any parking spaces, it's staff's opinion that the findings for the parking exception can be made. And that concludes my report. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Questions, staff?
I just have one. This isn't related to a use permit, it's just an application to permit a use on site. Is that correct?
This is an application for a use permit--
Oh, it's for a use permit.
--to operate a vehicle restoration facility. A use permit is required because the property's owned mixed use.
And when we consider use permits, does the commission have the discretion to review a use permit within a year or so? Say, for example, to get a status update to see if there's any complaints or anything like that?
Yes, that's an option the planning commission has. You could add a condition of approval that you would like to review the operation within six months or a year, whatever you choose.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Wendy, does, does this use permit, would it allow any other potential? I mean, use permits, you know, go with the land.
That's right.
And so that would mean that somebody else could use it for that, for that or a similar purpose. What other purposes could it be used for under this use permit?
It could be used for an automobile restoration facility that would operate under the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
See, what I'm concerned about is that, to me, I don't, you know, this particular applicant, and we haven't heard from the applicant yet, may be very valid, riding his bicycle, you know, to the place and everything else. But that doesn't mean that any future user would do the same thing, okay? And I'm concerned the fact, with the fact that, you know, with the waiving of any kind of parking requirements or anything else, do, does the applicant, to your knowledge, did they show you whether or not they have a lease agreement?
I did not see the lease, but I understand that there is a lease. And I would like to note that any future tenants would be subject to the same conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report. And we're suggesting to add the condition that no vehicles are going to be allowed to be parked on site.
How long is the lease for?
Well, you'll have to ask the applicant that.
In the project narrative, it says one year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in their, in their project description, it says one year. And it was indicated that the owner is thinking about doing some future development. That's why it's a short-term lease, but maybe the applicant--
Well, we actually currently have a project on the books that will be coming before us within the next month or so. So that's the, what is it, Vintage Park? So the likelihood is that that will be a one-year lease. And then the building will be gone.
My question, knowing that Vintage Park is coming, does the applicant know that Vintage Park is planned?
Well, I'm assuming yes, but we can ask the applicant to address that question.
And that's really a matter between the applicant and the owner of the property in terms of the lease.
Any other question? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And would the applicant care to speak on this?
Sure. Good evening, members.
Please state your name and address.
I'm David Boger. I live on Blue Wing Drive, which allows me to walk or ride my bike to this facility. So this parking exemption is perfect. I'm, gosh, I'm an engineer. I'm not retired as of yet. But my high school job, my first job, was working at a, at a gas station. And the owner was a British car enthusiast. And unfortunately, I was infected with this disease at age 15. So I continue to love to work on British cars. And I've been looking for an opportunity to get out of my garage at home. And that's been a two-year quest. And as this lease became available, I just gobbled it up. So I am aware that it is just one year. And who knows what the outcome of this proposed project might be, but I'm prepared after one year to pick up and replant at some other location. I'm really making no particularly large investment in the building at all. So it, although it would be a bit of a disruption to move, I don't find that to be objectionable. I think that I've outlined, just as Wendy has in my project narrative, that I don't expect there to be any real impact on the community. I'm just an old guy who likes to work on British cars and needs space that's larger than his garage. Any questions at all?
I do, I have a couple of questions. So this is basically more of a hobby kind of thing than it is a business because it doesn't sound like any business that would really work in the real world with all due candor.
You know, and I appreciate that comment. Actually, people can break even or maybe make a little bit of money, unlike a winery. And so I've really enjoyed this hobby. And wouldn't it be nice if, if I could maybe make a little bit of money out of it? I do have, I expect only to take one project at a time. I have one lined up that'll probably take me the course of the full year's lease. And my expectation is that I'll more than cover my rent with the billings. So yes, I do intend to operate it as a business. I would love to get paid for the work that I do. And being interested in following the rules, I applied for a business license.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
Anyone else cares to speak on this item?
Can you both go at the same time? I don't want to follow Robert. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposal. My name is Jerry Hyatt. I also live on Blue Wing Drive. And I am retired. I just retired from the federal government after 30 years as an environmental health scientist. I'm here to voice my support for David's application for a use permit for his auto restoration business. And there are really two reasons for that. The first is that Patty, my wife and I, have lived here for almost seven years. And living on Blue Wing Drive, we're around the corner from this property. So we're interested in whatever happens at that property. Secondly, I know David. David and his, his wife moved into our neighborhood almost three years ago. And during that time, I've come to know him rather well. And in getting to know David, I've realized there are a couple of aspects of his character that really speak to how well and how responsibly and considerately he would run a business at this particular facility. First of all, David is a craftsman. He's not really just an auto mechanic. He's a craftsman who is passionate about his work. He's passionate about restoring vintage sports cars. He takes his time to do the best job possible and strives for perfection in everything he does. If you saw his 1964 Triumph Spitfire, what it looked like before he spent a few years on it and what it looks like now, you realize that he really is a perfectionist. Secondly, David is a really good neighbor. Ever since moving into the neighborhood, he has volunteered to pitch in and help whenever somebody has a project, either working in their yard or working in their home. He's always available to lend an extra hand. And he's always available to give us expert advice when it comes to the kinds of mechanical issues that he's familiar with and the rest of us frankly aren't. The most telling example there is we have an elderly neighbor who has kidney disease and requires dialysis treatments three times a week. We have-- We have a small group of people that have banded together to drive her back and forth to those dialysis appointments three times a week. When David found out about this group, he immediately volunteered to become another one of the drivers, even though frankly, he didn't really know her very well at the time. He just saw a need and volunteered. In short, I know he will be a responsible, considerate businessman at this facility. And I think his character speaks to that. And for that reason, I urge you to approve his use permit application. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Good evening. My name is Robert Corey. I live at 186 Blue Wing Drive, also a friend of David's. In the car world, I'm considered a car guy. I've been in vintage cars for about 55 years. And just so you understand what a restorer is all about, to take a car and when it does come into the shop, the first thing they do is drop the gas tank and send it out to have it boiled out and repaired. And the radiator is then sent out. So there's no, any fluids around. There's no any dangerous products that are being used. As far as parking, he comes down to the shop in his bicycle. To restore a significant car, you're looking at maybe, he says a year. I say more like two years. I've had cars that went for four years. So it isn't a lot of traffic going in and out. There's not a lot of people going in and out. It's really a one-man hobby. And I know several of them from the peninsula. They have their little shop and they go in and do their thing. And so if there's any fear that it's, you know, will be a hazard to the neighborhood, you're wrong. So the car is really taken apart and parts are already sent out. The body is taken off the chassis and sent out to a body shop. So there's no painting there. The radiator is sent out and repaired and comes back like brand-new. The gas tank and so on and so on. So what he's really doing, what a restorer is doing, is taking a car apart, sending it out to the upholsterer and all these people. And when it comes back, he reassembles it. It takes a long time, so not to worry. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action in the motion.
I just want to say that I think that clearly the applicant is a nice guy. And he's very well-liked by his neighbors, and I think that's admirable. But he has a one-year lease on a property that is in a state of flux, okay? May or may not be into something else. And it's a use permit that runs with land. So from my perspective, because you would be riding your bike to where it is that you're going, that doesn't mean the next person who takes up the second-year lease, and you're not in control of the property, I cannot support this application, not because of you or not because of how you would use it for the year, but because use permits run with land. And we have virtually no enforcement capability in Sonoma. I mean, it's very, very limited. I think the commission knows that because we've sat here and deliberated for many, many hours on projects that continually come back to us and have been asked again and again for enforcement of the conditions that we imposed. And they are not enforced. So my apologies, because I don't think you're a bad guy. And I don't, my son-in-law is an attorney, and he does exactly the same thing. He has a Triumph, and he's restoring it right now. So it's not as if I don't think it's a good thing to do. I just don't like it to be done under a use permit that runs with land, where you wouldn't be in control of it.
Just a question for staff. I believe we have the ability to issue this as a temporary use permit for a year. Is that correct? So if that would make it more acceptable, I think that we could do that and ask for a review after a year and see if it needs, you know, if there's any need to be extended. It may be a moot point, but I think that would get us out of this dilemma. Anyone else want to chime in on that?
Well, I just think it is unnecessary because the conditioning of the application is such that, I mean, I can't imagine anyone else seeing this as a viable economic opportunity to operate for a few hours on two days of a week. I mean, if that's what it takes to get this approved, I guess that, because I had the good fortune when I was doing my site surveys. Mr. Boger happened to be there because he was meeting the technician who was installing his burglar alarm. And so I can sort of attest to the conditions of operation that are present there would be such that if you were only able to operate that on two days a week, I can't imagine, even if this permit carried with the land, that it would be anyone other than sort of a serious hobbyist who could actually make a go of it as a viable economic interest. But I certainly would agree to a one-year thing, but I don't think it's entirely necessary. It seems that the other conditions that have been imposed, including your addition, Chair Felder, of the parking restriction, would be sufficient to sort of render this kind of economically moot. And by comparison, he is next door to Vern's Taxi, which has serious equipment and things and multiple cars, that it's an operation seven by 24, 365 days a year. So the sort of presence of this operation or any similar operation in that environment seems to me, it just seems like we'd be being unnecessarily restrictive.
I'd just like to add, I think the adjacent tenants are probably important in this issue. Chris Preet is a neighbor of mine, owns the Flag Store, and he's perfectly happy with this use next door. I know Mikey Cannon, the blues drummer, quite well, who's right next door to you in the same building, and he's perfectly happy with it. So those people are going to be the ones most affected. They're right there. So I think this looks like a fine use for it.
As I say, I can go either way, either just a regular use permit or a temporary, depending on what the pleasure of the commission is. But I'd look for a motion if nobody has any other comment.
My comment is that I like seeing vacant spaces filled because I think that suggests a better economy. And I think that we can condition it enough, even adding or not adding anything more, that it would assuage any fears I have with a use permit running with the land. But I personally like the kind of creative infill or infill of a vacant space. So I would not be worried too much about the use permit.
I had brought up the idea of having a review within one year or so. I think I would encourage the commission to still consider that. But the temporary use permit for one year would basically circum, you know, like just, it's apples to apples to me. So I would be fine with either or. But I do believe that we should have at least a review of it. It could be on the consent calendar. It doesn't necessarily have to be reviewed by our commission. You know, just like a lot of items. And it just tells us that staff has looked at to see if there's any complaints and any operational issues. So I think that would work just fine for me. But I would like, as a principle, to like, for uses like that, which are unique, that are almost uniquely related to the operator, to like maybe consider these items as temporary. We have had these in the past through at least the few years that I've been on the commission. So it might be a good precedent to set, so.
I support the temporary use permit. We don't know what's going to happen in a year or two years. We don't know if that project is going to come about. And I am concerned about it running with the land as well. And I think legally, I would feel better just saying it's for one year and then keep going. But I'm in favor of the project.
I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the use for, a temporary use permit for one year with the conditions of approval as proposed by staff and the additional condition.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's seven zero. So you have a permit, a temporary use permit for a year. And you can come back and see us if you need to.
Thanks, everybody.
Do you have to recuse for seven two? That's the second question.
Oh, that's been continued.
No, we haven't done that. We've got to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I need to recuse myself on the other one, seven point three, the one item, item twelve.
Okay. So for the record, Commissioner Bohar has recused for proximity on the next item. And the next item is the application for a tentative map to subdivide a site into four lots at 249 First Street West. And since we have had the indication that this has to be delayed, I would look for a motion to continue it to a date uncertain.
If I may, Chair, could I get some additional information on exactly the nature of the? I'm just curious to get like a little bit more information about the reason behind the, because about the, because I wasn't sure where the status of the, like, railroad district is. Because I assume that must be part of what is influencing this.
I apologize. It was a, I'm slightly hard of hearing. I didn't have hearing aids.
I'm trying to, I just was asking if we could get prior to making a motion, kind of a fuller explanation of what the...
But at the end, you said something else.
The, I, from the comments, it was relative to the potential historic railroad district or the, and I'm not sure what the status of that district is and what, you know, where the intersection with SEQA, that's, I just would like an explanation of what that is.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so it came to our attention this morning from Commissioner that they felt that it did not qualify as an exempted project under SEQA because of the pending depot historic district that the town has identified they want to pursue and has actually applied for a grant for. And is also indicated in public meetings that if they don't get the grant, they still want to pursue creating the historic district. Likewise, I believe sometime back when you were discussing that, staff put together a map of potential sites. And two of those sites sandwiched this lot. So if you were to draw a circumference around all the properties that could potentially be in that historic district, this site would be within that circumference. Ironically, this is a tentative subdivision map, but it has the details of the footprints, the elevations, the property, which adds another wrinkle in terms of its relevancy to the historic district, if you will. Okay? If it was just a straight tentative map, which only requires the boundary of a lot, it might not have the same wrinkles associated with it. Let's not go there. It is what it is. So we looked back in the record, and in fact, there was an analysis done by the city about the potential for the historic district, I believe it was done in 2016. And it was determined by experts at that time that the district did qualify under the California Historic Records Act to be put on the historic list. It would be qualified. So that elevates things within the review of this project. So in considering that, which was brought to our attention by Commissioner, which I really appreciate getting ahead of time, by the way, which I want to encourage you all, get us our questions ahead so that I can do the homework to come prepared to answer things to you, that we both can. So in looking at that, yes, to get to the exemption that was quoted in your staff report, there's another section of SEQA where you have to fully vet how you get to that section, that exemption. And because there's this historic district, that really needs to be done. And it wasn't done. So we're going to do that next step. And my guess is that it will require, after that exercise, historic analysis of how this would impact the future historic district.
So it's not so much the, it wasn't just the tentative map. It's because they sort of already identified and provided more detail about the elevations. Because that's, I think, part of what was...
Correct. And I didn't fully ask, you know, what would happen if it was just the map.
But we're just being safe.
Exactly. And also, and then there was the noticing issue. There's just been a habit that is not up to speed with the normal noticing requirements now under SEQA. And it's a moving target, so I wouldn't blame, you know, these things are hard to keep up with. The administrative world is becoming more and more complex all the time.
Just to piggyback on noticing and the project, since it, you know, would have to be described fully and completely for any noticing. This is a tentative map. But I guess my question to you is whether or not it would be considered a minor subdivision for four lots or less under the Subdivision Map Act? Or would it be considered a major subdivision where this property has been subdivided from a larger parcel and then is creating four new parcels, which would be a total of five, under the Subdivision Map Act, that would be considered a major subdivision? So I'm wondering if there's any noticing that may be needed or language to really truly explain what is being proposed. And in terms of the history, it might be really helpful for the commission that staff actually explain the subdivision history. I'm only saying that because we've had this brought up before, where we've had lots that have come before us to be built on and the whole history of the subdivisions. And the, what do you call, like, how should I say? There was like certificates of compliance for these properties that dated way back to a certain time in history, which determined whether or not it was a major or a minor subdivision, whether they were legally subdivided or not, whether or not they were a major or minor subdivision. So those are really complex issues, but they need to be vetted out and understood before, I would hope, before noticing. Because I believe that the projects that are major subdivisions versus minor subdivisions are treated differently by the city and also treated differently under SEQA.
Thank you for that. I can't answer you off the top of my head, but we'll look into it.
Okay, thanks.
Is that all the questions? Just to keep things on track, I'll go out to public comment before we look for a motion. And seeing no approach, I will bring it back to the commission.
I have a question. When we continue this item, are we continuing it to a date certain? So we can continue it to a date uncertain?
That's correct.
Which means it needs to be renoticed.
That's correct. And it needs to for the other reason.
Yes.
Correct, okay. Well, I move that we continue item seven point two to a date uncertain. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven passes seven zero.
I have one last question, if I may, okay? So when it's, when it comes back to us at some point in the future, okay, will we have the opportunity to comment on the project as a whole? I mean, will it be something that's...
You will be approving the tentative map. And again, in this case, it has the footprints and a lot more information than I'm used to seeing. So I believe you'll be able to comment on the project.
Okay.
But there'll be another round of reviewing on the entitlements for the project as a whole, I believe.
Okay.
I'm still coming up to speed on your code, so I apologize again. I'm new here and I need to digest your code. And this is my main brain trust at the moment. So we'll go back and we'll...
But I'm thinking back to a precedent of a property across the street from me that even though it went through a tentative map, the project was discussed in enough detail... that even though it went through a tentative map, the project was discussed in enough detail to have an understanding of what it would be.
And that was four lots right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're talking about this particular project?
No, I'm talking about another project that in the recent past has gone through the same kind of a process. And a tentative map was approved first, but the project was discussed at that time of that tentative map approval.
Thank you for bringing it up because we'll make sure we are allowing all the opportunities possible.
Okay, and with that, we'll close that item and I would invite Mr. Bohar to come back.
And did we get the vote on that? Forgive me.
Yes, we did. It was seven zero. And now I have another recusal. Oh, you're okay?
Six point two, I thought it was the one that, I thought it was this one here.
That's where we're going next.
Oh, seven point, I thought we were going on to six two.
No, we're done with all that stuff.
Oh, you did both of them at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. I need to recuse myself on that one.
So Commissioner Wellender is recusing for business reasons, I presume, on seven point three.
No, it's one if you have to.
So the next item on the agenda then is an application for use permit and parking exception to develop a point six eight acre site with 12 residential apartments and two live work units at 19410 Sonoma Highway. And again, we have some missing data from Caltrans. So we will look for a motion to continue this, I believe, to a date certain. We're going to do a date uncertain?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah. Yeah, we could do a date certain on this. We just have to think for a moment, their letter would come in on the 23rd. Noticing. I'm sorry.
You do not have to notice it to a, for a date certain?
That's true. You could continue it to your next, to your next meeting.
The next regular meeting, which is September 13th?
Yes.
So.
Then I move that we continue this item.
Well, let me open it up to the public before.
You're seeing something I'm not, I guess.
Seeing no approach, we can come back to the commission. I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll move that we continue this to a, our next meeting of September 13th.
I had a question before we take action on that motion.
Well, let's see if we have a second and then you can ask a question. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now your question.
Okay, so my question has to do with, so we, obviously I've read the staff report and my questions that I had about it. But one of the missing components of this staff report and the elevations is the carports themselves. There's no elevations or, we just have a location of a carport. I don't know how tall it is, how high it is, how far it's set back really from the building. So I would hope that if it does come back on the 13th, that we have all of the complete set of plans so we can take an analysis of the, of the building masses, which would include this carport. Thank you.
And I also had a comment on that one that it looked like there were a couple of conditions missing, the one on water demand and water conservation. So if you'll make sure that's in there the next time. And Commissioner Carrato?
Just wanted to remind you that I won't be here that night.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Unless it's regarding the project.
It was a similar kind of informational question.
A similar informational question as Commissioner McDonald made.
Okay.
I noticed that there's a reference to the traffic report, but as far as the staff report, the traffic report is not in the package. And it's likely I'm going to have some questions about the egress ingress at that meeting. I'd like more information on that if that's appropriate to ask that tonight.
Is that in the initial study that that was on the website but not republished for this? So let's make sure we get that initial study and however it needs to be updated as part of the packet. With that, we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye? Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have six zero to continue this to a date certain on September 13th. And that concludes the public hearing and we have now, we have no items for discussion on the agenda tonight. So we move to issues update as soon as Commissioner Wellender returns.
Right. All right, well, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for sending me what Mr. Goodison had presented to you in your July meeting in terms of the format and the topics and so I sort of picked up on that. And I'm going to bring you up to speed on what I know after being here a whole three days in the seat on these specifics. But before we get into the details on these, I just want to say, of course, the biggest issue facing staff right now is two thirds of your planning department left in the last couple of weeks. So we're in a triage situation right now and we're going to do the best we can. But I would beg for your patience as we deal with this period of transition. It's, it's a juggling act to keep up with all this. And as you know, we have legal requirements with a lot of what we do. So we have to really pay close attention to those. And my goodness, there are a lot of things going on in town here. So during this transition, I would beg you to be patient with us. We're filling in the senior planner position with temporary staff immediately. There's a job application out for a senior planner. If anyone's watching this and there's a skilled planner somewhere in the world, please apply. There's a recruitment underway for the permanent replacement for Mr. Goodison that I'm temporarily sitting in for. I would also ask you to please get your questions to us before the meetings so that we can vet your issues and be prepared to answer. And like tonight, it really makes things go a lot smoother. So thank you again for giving us a heads up earlier tonight. And in, in terms of dealing with triaging our work right now, you may be aware, the council was made aware, I believe it's up on the town's website, there's a notice at the front counter. Because we're down to Wendy's institutional knowledge, we've reduced the front counter hours where Wendy has to get pulled away from her normal work or myself. There will be on call as normal Monday through Thursday in the morning before lunch. Someone comes in, they want to talk to a planner, we will be available. However, the change is in the afternoons, Monday through Thursday, you need to make an appointment with Ms. Morris. Christina Morris will be there and she will be at the front counter during the times that the planners will not be available to actually take questions, write them down, telephone numbers. So there'll be someone actually fielding any issues at the front counter. And then lastly, on Friday, we'll be closed for counter activity. And this is again, all just planning staff, not the building staff, not the other activities that get handled by the city at the front counter. It's not going to go on forever, but it's just during this period of triaging our work. So going down the list that David presented to you at the last meeting, there has been some updates that you may be aware of in the news. The West Napa Street Hotel, the recirculated, the updated EIR was prepared and has been, is being circulated for comments right now. We are targeting a special meeting to get comments from the public on the updated EIR for the week of Labor Day. And we had scheduled it for the fifth, but council had shifted from the third to the fifth because of Labor Day. So we have a challenge, both meetings are scheduled for this room. So I'd like to.
I think, I think that was a mistake from David. He meant the sixth, I believe.
Okay, good. I'm going to ask you if four of you are going to be available on the sixth. And again, that's the Thursday of the Labor Day weekend. And there'll be no action taken. It's just to hear the comments on the EIR. And then along with the written comments or emails or telephone messages, the consultants have to address each and every comment that's made on the EIR. I might add that nowhere in SEQA law does it require a public meeting to do this, but the town is holding a publicly noticed meeting to do this. So the town is going beyond as far as SEQA law. Your ordinance, as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, does stipulate for land use issues or if it's a public hearing, it has to be noticed ahead. But SEQA does not require a public hearing to take these comments. But the town is going the extra mile to do that and to be transparent. So thank you. There will be four of you available, I hope, on the sixth?
I believe so, so we should plan on the sixth.
Thank you so much. And that alleviates the council from having to find another date too, so thank you. The cheese factory, Sonoma Cheese Factory was continued and the consultant on that, or the applicant on that project is exploring options available. There aren't a lot of options from their standpoint, but they are still exploring the options. So stay tuned. That's just out there at this point and it remains to be seen what happens with that. The gateway was heard by the council. The appeal was heard by council on August 6th and it was continued. No action was taken. But it was determined that story polls should go up on the project. Under your code, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, story polls are at the discretion of staff. And so council did decide to implement story polls and we're working through getting those up on the site through skilled people that do this sort of thing. The hospital lot, otherwise known as Mockingbird Lane at 851853 Fourth Street West. You guys had a study session, I guess, back in January on that. And we are fully vetting that one in terms of SEQA review now also. And it's looking like that will require an initial study. The housing impact fees.
Excuse me on that one. I believe that there is some material posted on the website for that, at least some elevations and things.
Thank you. The council did also entertain the housing impact fee and review of the inclusionary program on August 6th. I was not here, but I was watching the live feed of the program, of the meeting here in this room. And unfortunately, it stopped at 9:30 when they were talking about one thing. But, and I came in a little late because it was an early meeting and I thought it was starting at 6:00 and it was starting at 4:30. But I heard the tail end and I think they did sort of move ahead with directing staff on the housing impact fees that will go back to them. But I think they punted and due to time on the review of the inclusionary program, which I think they'll continue to visit later. The cannabis ordinance, you probably have been following that also. They decided not to put the petition on the ballot and ordered a study session. The emergency ordinance is up on, is coming up. So they will be extending the cannabis ordinance, moratorium on cannabis and that's scheduled for your PC meeting on September 13th. Wine tasting. Let's see, that's, moratorium is lapsing on the 30th and that will be going back to the city council for extension of the moratorium on the tasting rooms on September 5th. Vintage Park, the 2.5 acre zone mixed use site, 27 apartments, 80 beds, senior assisted living facility. That is going through SEQA review also and it's looking like it's going to have an initial study conducted on it also. Small cell facilities.
Excuse me, do you have a scheduled date for when that might be coming before us?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. Part of that is because you don't know what you discover in initial study until you go through it. And case in point, the Caltrans issue with the cultural resources that turned up in the highway in front of the project. Small cell facilities, you heard how that's going through the public comments this evening. We do have a special meeting scheduled on the 30th of August to entertain the applications on the three commercial sites. And it'll be coming to you in one, one report, even though there's three separate applications. And that concludes my update.
Can we see a copy of the agreement that was signed?
I believe so. I, I believe we, I'll, if we can, I'll.
If it's, if it's available to us, I think that'd be good for us to see that even in advance of the meeting.
Yes, yes. So that concludes the update on issues. And once again, I'm still coming up to speed, even though I started on Tuesday for David officially. Your city manager brought me in on a part-time basis about four weeks ago to work on fees, staffing and your code. So I could start to learn the code, see the challenges with the staffing, two thirds of the department being on, and also be involved with a fee study. And I have been involved with a fee study and we've met with your, the council subcommittee. And we are finishing up some data sheets that are going to get reviewed by the subcommittee. And then there'll be an analysis taken to the full council for consideration. But the short of it is, I don't know if you're aware, the town has only been collecting 13% of what the cost of processing applications is. And normally in municipalities, it's 50 to 80%. And it's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars that is not turning into revenue for the town. And when you don't take that revenue in from the applications, it comes out of the general fund. So there's going to be an adjustment in the fees. There's the flat fees and then there's what's called full cost recovery fees where anything that's done in the applicant, should I say, major subdivisions, that that is the burden of the applicant in the process. And so there might be some adjustments in the deposit, but it really doesn't matter because in the long run, it'll be full cost recovery on those categories. And you'll eventually see the breakout of what categories are flat fees and what are not. And the flat fees won't go up to 100%. It'll be a soft. My guess is the flat fees won't go up to 100%. There'll be a soft landing on those because it's been a long time since they were adjusted to the appropriate place.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
So we come down to comments from the commission and I just want to personally thank you, Mr. Planning Director, for coming on board. And you had a stellar meeting that went very quickly. But I'm sure we're going to have a few longer meetings in the, in the near future. But I'm looking forward to your participation.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here and a great challenge with all you have going on. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about fees and full cost recovery. I don't know if you've looked at other cities and how they do that, how they look at billing of staff time, review of building permits that are in conjunction with planning applications, looking at billing for consultants and special consultants to review projects or special design review or things of that nature. But have, have you looked at other cities or do you have examples where you're currently going to be using to go before the council to talk about a fee structure?
To start with, I'm not driving this, the city council, the city manager is driving this. And the answer is yes. There's a consultant on board that did do the background analysis and comparative cities and likes cities. And, and that is part of what is being vetted and discussed now.
Great. Just as a suggestion to the city manager then, I went through, as, when I was working for the city of San Mateo, we went through a huge exhaustive study and analysis and came up with, I thought, was a full cost recovery system where staff was billing on, you know, on their time cards. And, you know, there was like a deposit and, you know, like you would get a deposit and you would be billing like every hour or whatever, every time you'd have a meeting, staff meeting, whatever. So that, that was the city of San Mateo. And I don't know if you were working with the city manager, but that was, I thought was a really great example. They spent a lot of time developing their system and.
Right, thank you. I am, I am, I've been brought into the process and I, that is part of what is being determined and there'll be recommendations made to the council. I don't want to get ahead of what's being discussed and it hasn't fully been decided yet. But in, in all likelihood, when you implement full, well, excuse me, when you implement full cost recovery, you need some tracking system. And there are multiple tracking systems out there. And while they can be a real headache for staff, I went through this in Fremont with, the tracking system was just incredibly detailed. And it was a pain to do that every, you know, every time card. But boy, it made you aware of how much time you were spending. And you had just this dumb column of admin time. And if you went over 20% of admin time, you were in trouble, you know, you had to have billable hours. So it really does help to keep the whole ship afloat and the system honest. And again, it's coming out of the general fund if you aren't having the applicant pay for it. As you know, it's a standard operating procedure.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments?
Is there any update as far as what the process is going to take place in terms of filling the full-time planning director with sequences?
Yeah, so again, they, they went out and there has been, the first round, I forget the close date. The first round happened and there. I forget the close date, but the first round happened, and there was a handful... Eight applicants. And they've been there in the process of being reviewed. And it's not determined yet whether there'll be interviews, formal interviews, out of this round or not. So, I can't get ahead of it. But it may open up again, it may not. We'll see. And there is a professional recruiter involved with this. Anderson, Ralph Anderson Associates, is handling the recruitment process. And that is actually someone that I've worked with in the past and who came to me asking me if I wanted to fill in the interim position and apply for the long term. And I indicated I was interested in the interim position, but not the long term. So, you know, I retired a year and a half ago in December of sixteen from the town of Fairfax, where I'd been planning director for almost eight years. Another interesting small republic with a lot of strong voices.
Is that it? I will then entertain a motion for adjournment.
And who move we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
But you don't have a say because you're just the alternate meeting.